We have a quick break here. Ladies and gentlemen, we're very honored tonight to have the mayor of the greatest city in the United States here, Mayor Eric Garcetti.
I know we're in the midst of a presentation, so thank you, Mr. CAO and Mr. CLA. Thank you to our great general manager who's here as well, Ron Nichols. And most of all, I want to thank everybody who's taken time out of their day to be here, to come to City Hall, and to thank the Neighborhood Councils for doing this. And I didn't mean to forget you too, Fred, our great ratepayer advocate. I am now on the beginning of my seventh week in office. It has been an awesome and seems like years-long experience already. So if I have no hair and it's all gray in a couple of months, you'll understand that's the fun part of the job. But I really also have tremendously enjoyed the ability to immediately dig in on the issues that have been the most important, the ones that I heard throughout the city that people care about, and that at the end of the day, they elected me to come here and to make a difference on. I was elected as mayor, I believe, to reform City Hall, to reform our Department of Water and Power along with everybody else in this room. And I believe as well that the trust that we have is built on our ability to communicate, to open up, and to discuss, and not to be scared of that light, but to try to shine that as brightly as we can at every moment. Labor negotiations are a strange kind of thing, though, because by definition, they usually happen behind closed doors. In fact, the law dictates that. And were it not for what has been made public already being public, I have to tell you under the law, I couldn't be here discussing those points that I'll just refer to them as having read about them in the LA Times, because that ensures that it's been something public, and the Daily News. We had one party in the negotiations share that, the intricacies of at least one offer that was on the table in the Daily News. So against that backdrop, I wanted to come here tonight to speak to you, to kind of give you a perspective about why, not any headline writer, not any, with all due respect to the great journalists that are out here, without any journalists, without any, you know, second, third-party he said, she said, to hear from me, your mayor, why I think this is such an important moment and what we have at stake. We have before us a contract that you have read about, a proposal, that has in it, as you've heard everybody say, and if I had been at the table on Friday in City Council, I too would have said saves money. I don't think anybody disputes that. I think that the context of that has come out of, in large part, an election in which people said loud and clear, "We want reform in the DWP," and the recognition by both our labor partners, our political elected officials, and those who work with us here, that change has to come. I think if you asked any of us a few years ago, could we ever have imagined raises being given back? We would have said, "No, that's not happened here." Would we have imagined a couple of years without raises being proposed? No, that hasn't happened in 20 years. But I want to be clear about what's good and what we have achieved, and why I have drawn a line and why I've said that I'm not satisfied yet. And I would downplay, I know it probably excites people out there to say there's some sort of big fight here at City Hall, there really isn't. We have worked really well together, whether it's the CAO and myself, whether it's council members who I've talked to privately. But sometimes among friends, we have some differences of opinions, and sometimes people play a particular part in pushing us further than we thought was possible. We are at a different point today than we have been in years, decades maybe. But it is my responsibility to ensure that we're not back here in two or three years and you say, "You know what? You didn't look at that footnote? You didn't read it carefully? You closed out the option of further reform?" I want to say to you clearly that this contract is not the beginning and the end of reform of the Department of Water and Power. It's one of the places, one of the most important places to make that change, but I assure you as your mayor, it's not the only place that I will. In fact, I've been listening to you, and many of you said it was important to have folks from the Neighborhood Council serve on our commissions. And so on this commission, I have not just one, but two Neighborhood Council leaders, one who replaced Fred Pickle on his Neighborhood Council, who's been nominated to the commission, and one who you know who heads an alliance in the Valley of Neighborhood Councils. So the Neighborhood Councils wouldn't have to ask for a voice, they'd have a very strong voice, 40% of the seats on the Department of Water and Power, to folks who are in the Neighborhood Council and leaders on this issue. Second, I think it's important for us to recognize that this city in the past has never missed an opportunity to miss an opportunity. And I want to make sure that we don't do that. So while all of us, I think, have been allies in this fight, there are a few who will say, "Never surrender, never give up, I'm never going to be happy," and I respect that. That's an important position for some people to have, and it helps us, quite frankly. But at the end of the day, I also have to move the ball forward in this city, and if I don't have to sacrifice my values, I will. But right now, not all of those values have been met before with what is on the table with us. So let me walk through those very quickly, and then I'd be happy to, I know there's more, and I think some of this was being walked through right now, I'd be happy to answer a couple of questions, too. I don't want to just talk at you, but I'm more than happy if there's time to. First of all, we have said that the Department of Water and Power, we need salary savings. I think nobody disputes that there are salary savings in what is proposed with giving back a due raise this coming year, starting October 1st. Now, it's not that simple. If a raise went forward this year, it is pegged to inflation, as determined CPI this month. Inflation's been running about 1.8%, 1.9%, and it's a range of 2% to 4%. So it would be rounded up and it would be 2%. What you've read about, I'm sure, on the table was a proposal that in a fourth year, that raise would be given up, but in a fourth year, or year three of a new contract, there would be a similar range depending on where inflation is, 0% to 4% given. Now, the dollars that have been calculated accurately by the CAO that would be savings in there assume the same raises in both of those years. But if we hypothetically, and God help us if we aren't above 2% in terms of our CPI three years from now, are above that, say we have a 3% inflation rate, or as high as a 4%, those savings that we have gotten, both on the base of salaries at DWP and the pensions, quickly become erased. And over the 30-year horizon that we have been asked to quantify our savings, over the 30 years, we would actually be in worse shape than giving a raise and having zeros in the future years. So it's important to me to make sure that if we're going to defray a raise, it'd actually be the exact raise. Second, pensions. There are pension savings when, on current employees, when they give up a raise that is due to them, because as you know, pensions are based on salaries, and anything we can do to save money on salaries, help us save money on pensions. That's a good part of this deal. And then the rest of the pension savings that is, has been described in the press, refers to a new tier for new employees, which would save us considerable money. Would all of us like a tier perhaps even higher, or one that mirrors, for instance, the one that we gave to our civilian employees here in the city? Potentially. But in credit to this union, they came to the table as opposed to fighting, and this is, nobody questions there is significant savings, just as we did with the police and fire unions earlier when they negotiated with us. We were able to come to something that was much more sustainable, we put that on the ballot, and the people passed that. So we have salary savings, we have pension savings. The two other priorities for me in the department in terms of reform have been health care and work rules. Health care, quite frankly, in this, there's not a lot of movement. It's not the only place to make movement, but there's, quite frankly, not much. And I have expressed publicly that I would like to see more. Now, it has been stated, and probably will be stated, that the raise that is being given this year is being put back into health care. That's fine, and it's real health care savings. In fact, 2% of a salary represents more money than paying 10% of a premium for an employee. And that's been our goal, to try to get 10% or so of our employees, sorry, to pay 10% of the premium for our employees. So it would achieve that goal. I have no dispute with that, but you can also count that as salary savings. It's either health care contribution or salary savings, not both. Okay? Is that point clear? And then finally, on the piece that has to do with looking at our work rules. This is really where I've drawn the line and have a respectful difference with where we're at right now, with some folks who would say, "Get this deal done right now before it disappears." For too long, too many rules, I think our general manager has inherited, that we inherited as elected officials and as budget analysts here, have been made with none of us there in the room. Certainly not with you, not with elected representatives, not with appointed Board of Water and Power commissioners, but by a committee that has agreed to side letters, side agreements, that have given us a lot of work rules at the DWP that we, quite frankly, have to change. Some of them have been formal, sometimes there's informal things, like the sick pay policy that you saw in terms of whether you have to bring in a doctor's note. We showed swiftly through the power of the press, through a general manager, through elected officials, and quickly assenting union, because anybody who looked at that realized, nobody in the real world can't just keep saying, "I'm sick," without a doctor's note, to make that informal rule that was unevenly applied become more formal and evenly applied. But other things may be much more complicated. What I have said, and I will, you know, not agree to an agreement myself, that doesn't include the ability for us to make sure over the coming year, those things that we don't even know, we don't know, those side letters and agreements have a mechanism for us to come together in good faith negotiations, and to be able to discuss each and every one of those, and where necessary, reform them. In some ways, that's probably the biggest salary savings, or cost savings, rather, we might be able to achieve. And we won't win with all of them, but they're important to fight each one of them and to figure out a way where we do take that out of the dark and put it in the light. So we need to have language that allows that not to be done by a murky committee in a back room. They're quite literally back-room deals, but where they can be vetted in the light of the day, or at the very least where they're confidential, which I don't think will happen too often, that the elected representatives and the appointed board can have a look at them. Moving forward, we should never pass another rule without being able to do that. Now, if it's a non-salary or cost-based rule, if Ron Nichols has people sitting down with union leaders and they say, "We want to change the same-cost type of wrench that we use on something," absolutely. Those things shouldn't concern us, and we need to have that mechanism to work on that joint labor management committee to be able to do that. But if it does greatly affect us, and it says, "This person can't cover that person because they're different classifications, even though they have the same skills," or "This is the exact size that a work crew has to be," et cetera, I think we'll have a legitimate place at the table questioning, and our ratepayer advocate has been brilliant on this, saying, "Really, this is probably the one area where we have the most work to be done." Ron Nichols has expressed that to me as general manager, that it's a tough place to inherit as a general manager to come in with those work rules. So I don't want us to say, "Two years from now, we rushed a deal through and we don't have the power to change those things." If we can get that, and I'm optimistic, no matter what you hear, I want to be clear, this is not about politics for me, and this is not about personality. This is about doing what is right and what I was elected to do, to reform the Department of Water and Power and to reform this city. And so, in closing, I remain an eternal optimist. To those who say Garcetti doesn't want a deal because he just wants to tank it, it's not true. I do. But I wanted to be as clear what the parameters of that deal must be. Some may push it forward, but you can be the bulwark. You each not only have mayor, a mayor, but you each have council members, and they must hear your voice, and I think it was wonderful that President Wesson invited people to City Council to speak. I know you had to wait a while, but you got to speak, and I applaud the council president. I've been working with his office, I've been working with individual council members, to be as clear and transparent about what I need. They've been very polite and warm back, saying, "We wouldn't have gotten here without your election," quite frankly. So let's close this out together. I remain optimistic that IBEW, that the City Council, that the mayor, and that the community can do that together. Thank you so much for giving me some time.
Is there anybody who'd like to ask a question? The mayor? Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Weissman. Yeah, press that button right down there. It's all...
There you go. What would your answer be to the question, "If we accept what IBEW is offering now, do we have ample opportunity to complete the job?"
I'm not a lawyer, although many people think I am. I came from a household of two, and I thought that was more than our quota. So I, in this week, am asking our CAO, who is lead on labor negotiations, to work closely with our city attorney, and to ensure that any mutually agreed-upon language does allow us to continue the job. I would also reiterate that not all DWP reform will simply happen through an MOU. So have some confidence that we will have other strategies and other ways of engaging the community, of looking at things, and of implementing reform. So will the job be done with this? Absolutely not. Will we always do it in a respectful and mutually agreeable way? Of course, that's what the law says, and that's what my hope is in terms of our labor relations with all of our unions. I told somebody the other day, "I wish this was a negotiation I was doing with a union that had endorsed me so that people would believe I really, it really is not about politics and really not about personality. It could be the closest union to me, and we have to be dispassionate about this. We have to look at the details and do what's right, not think that it's about politics."
Is there anybody else who'd like, Ed Novy? Come to the microphone so we can hear you. Oh, you have one in the back. Why don't you just use Stephen Box's microphone?
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
We've spoke before about pension reform.
We have.
And one of the things, looking at the IBEW proposal, currently, the pension fund is only 75% funded. Is there a way that you can see yourself building in a trigger so that the pension fund liability can be closer to 85 or maybe even 90%? Because at the end of this 2016 or 2017 period, that means the ratepayers are going to be on the hook for even more money.
Because with new proposals, that does begin to go into an area of confidentiality again, that was covered by the law, I will say, I've heard your suggestion tonight, I'll take it into account, and look at what we can do on our end on that. That's about as much as I can say, but I do agree with your numbers. I think that's the importance of pension reform, and it has to happen in two ways, as you know. It has to happen both on the base that we're paying of salaries, as well as the pension system that we have. And if we can get reform on both, and some of that's already on the table here, then we will take a pretty large step forward, but our work will certainly not be done.
Okay. And then if you're also at home watching the streaming or listening to this on council phone, remember townhall@empowerla.org. Sir? If you'd say, state your name.
My name is Jeff Bruce.
Hi, Jeff.
Is that working?
Yeah, we can hear you.
My name is Jeff Bruce. I'm a citizen, a ratepayer, and a property owner. I follow fairly closely what goes on with the budget advocates. I've got a question for you. Congratulations on your...
Thank you very much.
...Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Everything that we're discussing here is a function, whether it's the pensions or the 2%, or the, everything is a function of the base salaries for the city, for DWP. And we'll be doing the city later. What is the city of Los Angeles's general philosophy as to what makes a fair and appropriate wage? Is there a fundamental philosophy?
I think it would be...
And second, is there a benchmark, such as if the philosophy involves wanting to pay the same amount as the average city of over $2 million in the country? How do we stack up to that?
Absolutely.
What do we use as a benchmark? If it's related to private industry, what do we use as a benchmark? And if there's no philosophy, how do we develop one? Thank you.
Well, and Miguel, feel free, or Jerry, to jump in if there's anything wrong or if you want to chime in, too. No, is the short answer. We don't. I've been here for a little over 12 years, and I've never seen one if there is such a document. That said, an important part of this agreement also, and this has been made public, would deal with what the disparity between DWP workers and the same classifications, non-DWP workers. So even comparing within the city, and I know you've also asked other cities, benchmarking what this average non-DWP worker earns and starts at is critically important to us. And so I won't sign off on a deal, but I think it's been made public that this is at least partially right now included, that doesn't begin to address the disparity in like jobs across departments for two reasons. One is it's important for the base, and two, how can I ask the general managers that I'm talking to right now who aren't DWP to manage when every good employee they have, if there's an opening, they lose? Every mechanic from the fire department, every engineer from Bureau of Engineering, every account, you know, executive from Department of Finance moves over there after we put the training in here. I would like to develop that. I think it would be a fair thing to benchmark some of that. It's a very complicated thing to do, because the cost of living in Dallas is very different than the cost of living in Los Angeles, is different than the cost of living in New York, et cetera. But it is sound management philosophy, and I'd love to engage with the budget advocates on doing that.
What does the word "fair" or what does the word "appropriate"?
Well, I'll tell you what I think it is, as the mayor.
Can you, I hope that you would commit to setting up some kind of a small commission or just a pledge to, by the end of your term, having Los Angeles have a stated philosophy as to what is fair and what is appropriate?
Sure.
And what responsibility the city has to its employees, and what responsibility it has to its taxpayers.
And one thing that we do do, in fairness to both the CAO and others, is quite often in ERC, we will have those comparisons. We rarely look at a police, in my 12 years, a police contract without looking what are other departments paying, a fire contract. We do, there is some benchmarking done, and out of that, for practical reasons, not just philosophical ones, if you're paying a heck of a lot less for your police officers, you might not get any to come, and that's been a problem in the past years, if you don't, you know, equal the benefits of other places. But similarly, people look to us, and so the impact that we have on our wages is more than just the city of LA. We can either race to the top, we can race to the bottom, or try to do something fair. My philosophy is people deserve a fair wage and good benefits. I think that's an important principle I want everybody to hear here. We've got union leaders and others, and I need them to hear that, too. I want to be very clear that it is not my intention to come in and try to cut, 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 to run to the bottom, because we all, nor is it yours, I'm saying, because we all, we all pick up those costs and emergency room visits and food stamps and all sorts of things. We must be a just city, but we must be fair within the city and from the city towards other, you know, surrounding areas and other big cities. So it's, I think it's a really good idea, not just to do the benchmarking, but to develop that philosophy. So I appreciate that.
Sergio?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Sergio Ibarra, and I am the president of our LIDDA Neighborhood Council and a proud resident of the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank you for opening up the doors, letting the light in, to really take a look at the contract and the DWP contract negotiations. First of all, I'd like to say that the city deserves the best public servants that we can afford, whatever the market will bear. Every standard city has salary surveys to determine what the market will bear.
Yep.
You know, we're competing with other utilities for linemen, for water utility workers. I mean, just working in the utility industry, they just command a higher wage because they're very technical jobs. There are also clerical and miscellaneous jobs that are very comparable to the city, which I agree with you, that there should not be any pay disparity between a management analyst who works here and somebody who works at DWP.
Right.
The reason why I'm here tonight is because we have a lot of DWP property that runs through our LIDDA. We also have a large aquifer, and some of the, you know, water wells in our community are polluted. DWP is working on cleaning up that groundwater so we could use it. But I wanted to put this in your ear, that we want DWP to be a good neighbor to us. We're proud of our utility, but at the same time, those properties are not being maintained in our community. You know, let's use that catalyst for DWP and the buying and all the infrastructure that they do to clean up our communities, one, provide us clean water, and also to reinvest in our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sergio. I appreciate that. And I know Ron Nichols just heard that as well, and my commissioners will work on that, too.
Stephen, all the way in the very, very back, in the back.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jesus Escondón, and I'm a proud Anjolino. I live in the South over on 120th, and my family and I voted for you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I personally thank you.
Because of your pledges, in particular the DWP. I read the article on Friday's LA Times, and as a ratepayer, and also as a representative to the Budget Committee of the Harper Gateway North Neighborhood Council, I was very upset at council president rushing this through and other council members, and imposing a unilateral deadline of September 1, when there are many things, very specific things that you're familiar with, that entails a tentative agreement. But my question to you is, are you willing to, referencing that article again, are you willing to call some of the city council and some folks on the LA County Federation of Labor threatening, not just you, but the ratepayers, of saying that if we don't get this contract by September 1, we will go on strike? Are you willing to call their ploy, their bluff, and go all the way with them? Because if you are, we're with you. I am fed up of paying $300 plus for, at my household, for the water and the other services, but please, I encourage you to stick, stick to your guns, so to speak, and do not fold, because as a citizen of the city of LA, I am fed up paying so much for my utility. So are you willing to call their bluff, and if so, we're with you?
Thank you. There's a couple of things that you brought up, let me address. One is the, first of all, thank you for your comments and thank you for your support. And I think you feel the way a lot of people do. I wasn't elected to blow the city up, but I'm also not going to sacrifice my values. So where do we land on your specific question? First of all, the deadline that has been given is one that I, like you in some ways, inherited. Came out of a political campaign, and suddenly, if I were elected mayor and was sworn in in February, I guarantee you, I'd be saying, once it got made public, because by the way, they have to stay confidential, but once it was made public, yeah, you know, let's have 60 days, neighborhood councils can each meet, do all that kind of stuff. The September 1 deadline, or whatever the deadline may be, is a practical one for us to consider together, that by October 1, if we don't have something goes through, there will be an automatically triggered raise. We can't take that away, and nobody's talking about a strike right then. There would not be, there's nothing to strike over. We actually have another year of a contract. We wouldn't be until 2014 if things broke down. And by the way, that was one thing that I wanted to say very loud and clear. There wasn't a lot of discussion of that on Friday, but short of this deal and a strike, there's a normal process when someone's deadline comes up of a year-long negotiation, et cetera. There's a lot of time to do that. But eyes wide open, we will have lost an opportunity, at least on one place, to save significantly on a raise this year and the pension costs that come with that. So I feel that deadline, but I don't feel that that deadline should make me sacrifice my values, which is why what I've drawn in the line, I want to be clear, and that's why I'm here tonight, is I'm not folding if that doesn't get there. But if it gets there, it's important for me to have this discussion now compressed, recognizing we don't get each board of each neighborhood council to chime in, that we collectively make this decision, that I will make every effort that I've made since I was your mayor on day one, to open up these doors and to let you in, to let you into my thoughts, to hear from you, to be a part of a different sort of a process than the back-room deals that have gotten us here. So if we get those things lined up, I try to be as clear as possible, I'm ready to sign a deal that's going to be in the interest of all of us and to continue our DWP reform further, because again, it's not the only place and moment to do that. But if I don't get it, sure, I'll be asking you to stand with me, to talk to your council members, to ask them not to pass things in a hurry, and to make sure that, I don't think, it's as protective for them as it is for me. I don't want us to, a year from now, as I mentioned, say, we find out something else that we didn't know we didn't know comes out, and we can't change it because we already locked ourselves into something.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we'll take one more question. We haven't received any from our streaming audience, so we'll take one more from the floor here.
Okay. Dr. Tom Williams from El Cerrano.
Good to see you, Dr. Williams.
When we're talking about DWP, and I agree, the whole thing needs to be revised significantly. $6 billion industry that doesn't have an organization chart? Whoa, something's wrong there.
Whoa, something's wrong there.
I think we do have one. We can get to that, at least.
Yeah. However, it's, DWP isn't the only one. Your task, DWP is just one of many. We're in the hall for the Board of Public Works. My Public Works component of DWP bill is bigger than that of DWP. So after we get through with DWP, when do we move on to Public Works? Lawa, Port, and a few others?
Well, unfortunately, I don't have the luxury of stacking these in any order. When you're mayor, you do them all simultaneously. So one thing that I think is different is from the first day, and I've already heard some people saying, you know, "Why are you taking so long? Why are you leaving people hanging out there?" We changed the city charter a few years ago to give mayor the ability to hire and fire general managers. And, you know, when that's done at the federal level or the state level, it's not really a firing. It's just a new administration comes in. And I want to be clear that, you know, there'll be general managers, that there's somebody else that I want to bring in. It has no reflection on whether that sitting general manager is a good person or not. They're excellent people, you know, who have done good work. They wouldn't be in those positions if they hadn't been of some accomplishment. But I have been going through, I'm about halfway through, interviews with each one of the general managers, chiefs, and directors, because I think that's also what you elected me to do, and to make sure that they share a reform agenda. And I put those values out very clearly. Are you going to innovate and use technology? Are you going to be customer-friendly? Are you going to look at sustainability, which is important to me and the environment? And what are you going to do to jumpstart our economy? Those four values, I don't care if you're the librarian and you don't think that you have something to do with environment, of course you do. You have facilities, you have paper. If you're in the fire department, you use gas or whatever fuel in your vehicles, use chemicals on fires, et cetera. So everybody has a role in each one of these areas. And so the short answer to your question is, I'm doing them at the same time. It won't be after we finish this, go over to that. We don't have that luxury. We need an airport that serves its customers beautifully. And when people land at LAX, that's not the case, though. I invite you all to the new Bradley Terminal. It will look pretty extraordinary. We have too many places where people don't get a return call, too many places where their questions aren't answered, too many places where we don't get the service we deserve. That said, we have extraordinary public employees. I'm one of them. I value every single one of them, and I want to bring the best out of them. I want to make sure that they understand that they have a role to play in innovating in the city, in modernizing the city, and making it the city that has the very best reputation. But I'll say this last thing about DWP. I had a general manager who was in for his interview with me, and he said, "Good luck with DWP. It's a black eye on all of us. It's a black eye on those DWP workers who are good people and supporting their families. It's a black eye on my workers, because people look at them and say, they just figure, oh, you're one of those." We need to reform this for the good of the employees, too. Because I tell you, I'm not going to ever demonize, beat up, public employees. They do, I am one of them, first of all, so it'd be hypocritical. And second, they do the most important and some of the toughest and some of the dirtiest work. That said, we have to do it fairly, and that is my role. Thank you all very much. I really appreciate, give me the time.